Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of October 20th, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, Councilmember Gonzalez will offer the invocation. Following the invocation, Councilmember Freeman will lead us in the pledge. Would you all please stand?
God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life, the ability to live in this abundant community, and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. And help us remain mindful of what you said in Matthew 25:40, that whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters, you've done for me. Help us see the humanity and dignity in all people, and treat all others, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. Renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of building a better community. With confidence in your goodness and love, we all say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Welcome to everyone, we're glad that you're here. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones, please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by the City Council's resolution on July 14th, 2021. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, a proclamation to Katrina Starman, Treasurer for the Hire Committee of Kern County, declaring National Disability Employment Awareness Month in Bakersfield during October 2021.
Councilmember Gonzalez, she prayed for those who were the most vulnerable, and we are so pleased to have a group in our community that really focuses on persons with disabilities, those who face tremendous challenges. And I'm delighted this evening that Katrina Starman and Denise Crawford of the Hire Committee are joining us, they're both board members, and we have the privilege tonight of celebrating our persons with disabilities, just as this team does on a regular basis throughout the year. And it's my honor tonight to issue this proclamation. The mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California, has officially proclaimed October 2021 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in our city. In recognition of the workplace as welcoming the talents of all people, including persons with disabilities, in recognition of the workplaces that build an inclusive community and create a stronger economy, in recognition of the Department of Rehabilitation, higher and local organizations to promote the many contributions of persons with disabilities in Bakersfield, in recognition of the value and talent persons with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities, and in recognition of the City of Bakersfield's support of an inclusive community that forges programs and activities to advance opportunities for persons with disabilities. It's my pleasure to be able to present this to our board members of the Hire Committee. Ms. Katrina is going to be speaking.
Thank you guys for having us today. The Hire Committee is comprised of different organizations here in Kern County. All of us has regular jobs, but we all come together and collaborate, also Bakersfield College and Taft College, and we collaborate on hiring peoples with disabilities. We bring together all our resources and jobs that we have in the community, and every year we have a luncheon usually, but this year we're doing a virtual event, and it's on October 28th, and you're all invited. I gave flyers to the clerk for you all to get after this event. And so, we celebrate all the employers that hire people here in Kern County, and we also celebrate the employees that have been employed for a year, and we have a new category this year, which is for work experience and internships for our student workers that are learning how to get out in the community. Anyways, thank you all for having us here today, and feel free to come to our virtual event. Mayor Go always hosts it, she does a great job, she's been very supportive, and we really appreciate her here in Kern County, and thank you guys so much for having us here.
Thank you so much, Hire Committee, Katrina and Denise. Let's get them.
Public statements.
If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a speaker card and give it to the city clerk. Statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here on Consent Calendar Hearing Items 9A through C, now isn't the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, however, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Again, please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, including repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, outbursts from the audience surpassing the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers tonight?
Mayor Go, we've received four public speaker cards, all on separate subjects. The first speaker this evening is Curtis Bingham.
Thank you.
First Lady and our Honorable Mayor and the Board, I'd like to say that the Lord has made you guys leaders in the last days. It's hard to be a leader in the last days. Evil, running rampant, things are changing real fast, so you guys are real blessed. And I'd just like to say to you, Mayor, you have a family situation that was taking place, and as the Lord tells us, absent from the body means to be present with the Lord. So your family member, according to his faith in the Lord, is doing better than we do, because God is the God of the living and not the dead. And I also like to say, when the homeless shelter came up, you guys moved so fast and speedily, that's when we had them everywhere, and put that shelter together over there. And the Lord said, he who gives to the poor lends to the Lord, and he will repay you. And I think that's one reason why the Lord is shining on you guys, you know, you gotta do a real good job. And then the Lord, heart also wants you to know his heart, is with law enforcement. He called him his ministers three times. And when you look at our situation, and somebody hates you because you chase bad guys, that's tough to go to work with, but they do that. And then when you sit back and they call you a food stamp, millionaire maker, that's how they look at law enforcement, food stamp. I can get in some type of trouble, get me a little something from my pockets, millionaire makers. If one of them slapped somebody, somebody can get a million dollars, but if they slapped them, they can't get anything. And then when you're going out putting your life on the line for real, every day, that's a tough thing to do, and the Lord loves them and claims them. And that's why I'm happy to hear about these raises, these bonuses, and things that you're doing, because what else can you do? The Bible tells us, money answers all matters. So if you want to bless somebody for doing a good job, you're doing it in the right way. Somebody get hurt, this and that, look around the world, always money, 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 money to put people back in shape. So what you're doing for Bakersfield Finance and the Fire Department, it's a beautiful, beautiful thing that you're doing. If you ever went to a fire, you understand how important they are. If you ever seen them driving down the street in them big old fire trucks, and you're just hoping nobody get in the way, you see how important they are. Fire's nothing to play with, they're everywhere, you got to be ready at all times, they got to be at their posts. So I just pray the world recognize exactly what's taking place, and one thing I will have to say, that shield that we had, because when George Floyd had his problem, that was for one city, not the world, but the whole world talking, defund. If you defund, how you gonna catch the criminals? And so what happened now, they have unleashed Pandora's Box. You're gonna be seeing evil in a different way come up because of that reason, because law enforcement not happy totally as they should be, because the respect for them is being taken away, and many of them are starting to be killed, so it's a tough time now.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham.
Times will be different. Thank you, Honorable Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Next speaker, please. Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Margarito Michael Espinoza. I'm a facility worker for the City of Bakersfield Parks and Recreation Department. I'm here tonight on behalf of not only myself, but my fellow coworkers, as you see this sea of orange behind me. As a facility worker, I provide a vital service to the community by working to ensure that our parks and recreation programs stay accessible to the public, as well as keep our communities and public spaces clean. Since day one of the pandemic, I was designated as an essential worker and have been working my assignment daily since the very beginning of all this. I am here today to voice and show active support of my bargaining team. The city workers deserve respect, both in the field and at the bargaining table. We have been faithful workers for the city, who have carried out our work duties without prejudice, even when faced with the real-life threat of catching a virus, which at the beginning did not have a vaccine to protect us or help spread, help from spread. We are not asking for more than we deserve, we're not asking for a handout or special Just merely recognition of the vital services we provide by receiving fair treatment and recognition at the bargaining table. Recognition comes in many forms, and we understand that, and we certainly appreciate the verbal acknowledgement that we have been receiving from the community. But we also deserve a fair contract which acknowledges the valuable services that all city workers provide, all city workers. The city cannot run itself, and it's time for a fair contract which compensates all city workers for their bravery and commitment to the job during this unprecedented pandemic. The communities we serve have greatly benefited from our commitment to our jobs, as we've strove to keep vital services open to the public during a time when recreation has now become some source of therapy, and even it's a necessity now, people just need to get out. The time has come to recognize our collective efforts to keep our city open for business. A lot of small businesses are suffering, and they still continue to suffer. We, as essential workers for the city, have become an invaluable asset. The time has come, again, for recognition in the form of a fair contract, which recognizes all of our accomplishments. Please join us in our effort to negotiate a fair contract, which recognizes our combined efforts to continue to keep the city open and safe for the citizens of our collective communities. We don't just merely deserve a fair contract, we have earned the right to a fair contract, which recognizes the sacrifices we all made, not only for ourselves, but for our families. I want to thank you tonight for your attention and for listening to us in this vital matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Espinoza. Madam Clerk? Madam, go ahead and call the next speaker, and we'll just wait until the chambers are cleared.
Kristen Urquides.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Kristen Urquides, and good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Go. I'm here tonight to provide an update on the Casa Esperanza Good Neighbor Policy that was narrowly passed by this council in September. We have just passed the six-month mark that Casa Esperanza has had possession of the home, and they're still in demolition mode. I understand that renovations are messy and can take quite a long time to complete. However, the pictures I sent to the council this past week show that this home looks quite rough and not close to being ready for occupancy. This project has ballooned in scope and size beyond what anyone expected. Building permits have only been approved for renovations on 1,575 square feet of this home, which is less than half of it. However, the two-man construction crew has literally deconstructed nearly every room in the house, most of it down to the studs. Now, what should interest this council is the fact that a few predictions have come to fruition about this process. First, Casa Esperanza was gravely underprepared for the scope of the construction needed for this project, and is going to cause a huge delay in any implementation plans. Meanwhile, the new Jamison Transitional Home that opened last week by the Mission at Kern County took three years from the idea to opening an operational home. A little over a year of that was the actual construction. Casa Esperanza has been in ideal mode for the past seven years, and are nowhere close to opening their doors. The Mission's Transitional Home was constructed in a zoned commercial area and categorized as a halfway house. It boasts 13 bedrooms with en suite bathrooms and a maximum occupancy of 33 women and children. It has a commercial-grade kitchen to cook the meals needed for the occupants, a large outdoor play area for children, and the Mission knows the residents that is moving into the home because they are graduates of their 18-month program at the recovery center. This is in stark contrast to the Casa Esperanza's plans. Second, the obvious construction and vacant nature of the house has turned the property and our neighborhood into an easy target for thieves. In the past two weeks, my husband and I have scared off trespassers in the backyard of the property on three separate occasions. We notified the Casa Esperanza board via email immediately, they eventually sent out their carpenter to check on the property. He is frustrated, and we are equally frustrated, that there is not a better theft deterrent system in place on the property. Motion lights do not scare off thieves, and neither do neighbors yelling at them over the fence. We warned Casa Esperanza that having alley access means that extra precautions need to be taken to maintain a safe and secure neighborhood. We are angry that our progress as neighbors over the past three years to be vigilant and deter crime and transient traffic in the alley have become undone, as this house has become an easy target. So if you ask me if Casa Esperanza has been living up to their promises of being a good neighbor, I would tell you that I am honestly probably the one being the better neighbor. They are being complacent in actually taking action on this project, because they are too wrapped up in the fun of fundraising. So in closing, neighbors are not happy, Casa Esperanza is a very long way from helping women and children, and our neighborhood security has taken serious steps back due to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urquides. Next speaker, please. Oh, Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you tell me, is there a fence around that property? So, is it possible we could talk to them about a construction fence that would keep the unwanted guests out of that property?
I'll take that as a counter referral, Councilmember.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Marian Vargas.
Good evening, please introduce yourself, and you might lower the microphone, please.
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Go. My name is Marian Vargas. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you about the issue of safety on equestrian and hiking trails of the Kern River Parkway. It has been well documented that there are inherent dangers to equestrians and their horses and habitat from allowing e-bikes on trails designated for equestrian and hiking use. Because of changes in state law several years ago, some classes of e-bikes are now classified as bicycles, rather than the motorized vehicles that they functionally are, giving them legal access to equestrian and hiking trails of the Kern River Parkway. Over the past months, you have received letters, emails, postcards, petitions, and phone calls on this issue. We have spoken to and met with some of you in person. We have shared personal experiences of encounters of horses and e-bikes, referenced best practices for trail usage planning, spoken about the nature of horses as flight animals, explained the benefits of being able to enjoy the quiet of nature on our horses. We've also described the different types of e-bikes and their potential speeds, and noted the numbers and severity of injuries from both equestrian and e-bike accidents, as well as the financial benefit that equestrian activities provide to our community. Until the issue of e-bikes on equestrian and hiking trails is resolved, unnecessary hazards will exist, and our concerns will continue. We hope that you care about the safety of the equestrian community and are doing something to address this issue. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Vargas. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 8A through 8AU for approval.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any councilmember wish to pull or abstain from any item on the agenda? Seeing none, I move we approve Items 8A through 8AU.
Thank you, you have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you, next item, please.
Consent Calendar Public Hearings Items 9A through 9C for approval.
It's now time for the Consent Calendar Hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under Consent Calendar Hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. At this time, I'll open Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 9A through C. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, does any councilmember wish to remove an item from the consent calendar Seeing none, at this time, Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 9A through C is closed. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve staff's recommendation on Items 9A through C.
Thank you, if you have a motion, please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Gray absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under New Business, Brundage Lane Navigation Center, BLNC, the resolution dispensing with bidding procedures due to limited time to complete the remodel of the BLNC expansion, and two, design-build-construction agreement with Rymac General Contracting not to exceed 58,274 to provide conceptual design, exploratory demolition, and cost estimating services for the remodel of selective portions of the BLNC.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will turn the time over to Anthony Valdez, our Assistant to the City Manager, to walk through a brief overview and through a presentation.
Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Anthony Valdez, City Manager's Office. I have the privilege today to come and talk to you about what is the council, the communities, and staff's number-one priority, and that is addressing and ending homelessness here in the City of Bakersfield. But I want to start by introducing the group behind me. We have Jim Wheeler, who's the CEO of Flood Ministries. We have Theo Deuce, who is the Director of the Brundage Lane Navigation Center. We have Phil Burns, who is our Building Director, who's in charge of code enforcement and our rapid response teams. We have Lieutenant Jeff Burdick, who is in charge of our impact teams at the Police Department, and we have Paul Saldaña, who is our Economic and Community Development Director. And these are the folks who themselves and their teams are on the ground every day, working to address homelessness. I wanted them to be here with me today to recognize them and their work, but also have them available to answer any of the questions that you have as we move through this presentation. So I want to start off by inviting our residents to visit www.bakersfieldcity.us/homlessness. And this is where we've detailed the council's response to homelessness, since we've declared an emergency in 2018. So we've broken the website into four sections where we discuss the council's goals around homelessness and our implementation strategies. I won't spend too much time on this, but I want to kind of quickly go through them. I know we've discussed them at the last presentation on September 1st, but under homeless prevention, or excuse me, quality of life, as you can see here on the screen, we on the website talk about implementation strategies for our rapid response teams, our Clean City Initiatives, our biohazard cleanup in downtown Bakersfield, the impact teams that Lieutenant Burdick oversees. We talk about homeless prevention, and under that category, we talk about the city's Emergency Rental Assistance Program, the Bakersfield Homeless Centers Jobs Program, the Rapid Rehousing Program under Homeless Services. We go into the city's work to double the emergency shelter bed space here in the City of Bakersfield over the past two years, our street outreach program, which is led up by Flood Ministries, the Brundage Lane Navigation Center, which is what we're here today to talk about, under Affordable Housing Development, we talk about how the city has invested $5 million a year in PSVS dollars for the development of affordable housing, and also the approximately $20 million that the city plans to invest in ARPA dollars on affordable housing. So I'm going to also begin by giving a little bit of the problem statement that we have here in the City of Bakersfield, and these are the numbers of unsheltered residents that we have. And these are the numbers of unsheltered residents that we have in 2018. In the point-in-time count, in January of each year, we found 309 folks on our streets that are unsheltered. That doubled in 2019 and went up to 643. And that was the year that the council took action, turned to staff, and said, "We need to begin to have an emergency shelter here in the city." The council took decisive action in 2020, as we continue to see the homeless rates rise. The council authorized the purchase of the CalCop facility, which we converted into the Brundage Lane Navigation Center. And by the end of 2020, the 150-bed Brundage Lane Navigation Center came online. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the Brundage Lane Navigation Center by the numbers. Next week is the one-year birthday of the BLNC, on Tuesday. On Wednesday, or excuse me, on Thursday, the 28th, at 2:00 p.m., we're having our event there. Invite you all to be in attendance. But in less than one year in operation, the Brundage Lane Navigation Center has served over 750 individuals. Eighty-five individuals were moved off the streets and into permanent housing. They left the shelter with the keys to an apartment or a home, which is pretty remarkable in less than one year. Fourteen of those eighty-five were individuals that were reunited with their families and returned home. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the challenges at the Brundage Lane Navigation Center. One of the major challenges that we face now is that, on average, 64 individuals are turned away from the Brundage Lane Navigation Center each week. And I'm going to break down those populations for you. So in the Couples Dorm, 40% of the folks that we have to turn away are couples. These are folks that would rather sleep on the street, or under a bridge, or in a car, instead of being separated from their partner. The BLNC has the only Couples Dorm in the city of Bakersfield. The next large population that we turn away are folks with pets. So a third of the folks that we turn away would rather keep their pet and stay with their pet than go into a shelter. The city of Bakersfield has 25 spots for pets, 15 at the Brundage Lane Navigation Center and 10 at the M Street Navigation Center. And then we turn away, about 21% of our turnaways are men, 9% are female. And that's pretty typical for the 60-40 split that we planned for at the BLNC, and it shows out really in the data, that 60-40. So with all of this data, and I should have said, the folks behind me, we meet on a weekly and bi-weekly basis to go over the data, to go over the trends, to talk about what some of the challenges are. And so based on the conversations that we've had over the past year with the BLNC, it was the first time the city managed emergency shelter before the BLNC, and before PSVS, for that matter. The city's response to homelessness was to pass through federal funds because we didn't have the funds to be able to provide these services. Now with PSVS, we can. We have the Brundage Lane Navigation Center, and the city learned a lot. So I'm going to kind of go through what our findings were based on my conversations with this group behind me. One, the BLNC is popular amongst the homeless population. We have waiting lists, and I would, there's a couple of reasons I think it's popular. One, because our Public Works Department did an outstanding job in constructing the BLNC, and it just shows. It's a beautiful facility, and it's something that the city of Bakersfield should take a lot of pride in. Two, we have our shelter operator, Mercy House, whose model is one of come-as-you-are. It's one of compassion, but they're also tough. They have rules, and they hold folks accountable, and it plays well amongst the homeless population. The other thing that we found is there are some pretty big gaps in our shelter service to homeless subpopulations. We talked about couples, we talked about pet owners. The other is hospital discharges. Hospitals do not have a place, do not have much. There are a few beds, but it's not much to the level that we see, and I'll talk a little bit more about hospital discharges in a moment. The other, I'd say this is the largest issue that the city faces in terms of operating the Brundage Lane Navigation Center, and that is the self-exit rate is high. And if you were to talk to the folks behind me, what they'll tell you is that it is largely a result of mental health disorders and substance abuse. The city of Bakersfield does not manage mental health and substance abuse. The county's Behavioral Health and Recovery Services manages those mental health and substance abuse. The city of Bakersfield has been open to innovative programs. We have Project Rome. We are now having BHRS go with police officers on the impact team. We are partnering with BHRS at the call center at PD. But the city does not manage mental health and substance abuse, and this continues to be the number-one challenge. I've highlighted substance abuse because this really is the number-one issue our community has been talking about for years, particularly meth use. The folks that we see come to our center are, have been out there for weeks, months, on meth, crash at the shelter for a few days, and then go back out on the streets. And we really do, as a community, have to do better. The other issue is finding affordable housing placements. This is very difficult. In the community, there's a 1% vacancy rate amongst multifamily housing. It is very difficult to find a housing placement for our shelter residents. We have 40 residents who have been matched with vouchers with the Housing Authority, and they just, we just simply cannot find a place for them to go. And I should note that when folks are matched with vouchers, it also comes with a caseworker. So as folks move out of the dorm, move out of the shelter and into affordable housing, they're matched with a caseworker. The challenge is just being able to find that affordable housing, and that's something that we, as a city, are working on very hard. Another factor is that homelessness is on the rise across the state and nation, and that's something that we have to keep into consideration as we do our planning here in the city of Bakersfield. Another factor is until the city's investments in affordable housing come online, we really do need a near-term solution for the growing unsheltered population. So if you were to follow the trends across the city, state, and nation, you will see a rise in homelessness, and that's something that we will be planning for. And finally, staff have looked at considering utilizing the 15,000 square feet of unoccupied space on the BLNC campus. When the city built and did the tenant improvements to the Brundage Lane Navigation Center facility, the city left some unoccupied space for future use, and that is certainly something that we could consider. So based on all of our findings over the past year in operating the Brundage Lane Navigation Center, staff are coming to the council today to request further research on different opportunities to serve the subpopulations of homelessness, who could be better served by emergency shelters here in the city of Bakersfield. One possibility is the expansion of guest capacity by up to 150 guests. This would be accomplished by building a few dorms in the unused space, which would allow us to use them as overflow, and we can open and close the dorms as necessary as the population changes. Our goal is to put Mercy House out of the business of running emergency shelters by ending homelessness here in the city of Bakersfield. And by having those overflow dorms, we could expand and decline as the homeless population changes. The other thing that we would like to research is the expansion of the service provider wing. So what sets the Brundage Lane Navigation Center apart from many other emergency shelters is that we have onsite exam rooms from Kern Medical. We have onsite rooms for Behavioral Health and Recovery Services to provide mental health services. We have offices with the Department of Human Services there to connect folks with the benefits. Many emergency shelters do not have that onsite. They have to refer folks offsite. We have it all in one location. We also have the caseworkers there onsite to help folks find housing and to get on their feet. And so the expansion of the service provider wing would allow to expand caseworkers for us to continue to really get at the folks' challenges, connect them with services, and move them into permanent housing. I should also say, if there were to be an expansion of the amount of guests at the Navigation Center, we would also have a comparable staff level and increase the staff to the level where we are able to continue to have the level of service that we're proud of at the Brundage Lane Navigation Center. And I should also say that we have examined the calls for service to the Police Department in the areas around the Brundage Lane Navigation Center since we opened in October of 2020. The number of calls for service are flat, and we want to keep it that way. It is a closed campus where folks need to leave by shuttle. We have our security at Mercy House patrolling the neighborhood, patrolling the campus. There are cameras everywhere, and so we want to continue to make sure that we have minimal-to-no impact on the community surrounding the Brundage Lane Navigation Center and continue having the great relationship that we have with our neighbors. Another possible thing that we can look to is the establishment of a new recuperative care dorm. So a recent state law required that when hospitals discharge an individual, the individual has to have a place of residence. This is very challenging for hospitals because, you know, there are folks who have, let's say, a broken arm or some other ailment, that they are stabilized and they're well enough to leave the hospital, but they're not necessarily well enough to be on their own. And hospitals struggle with this new law and struggle with this lack of space where folks can recuperate and get better. If there were a recuperative care dorm at the Brundage Lane Navigation Center, what we would do is we would work with hospitals so that they would completely staff and pay for it, and then, once the individual's well enough, they can then be released into the general population of the shelter, have our caseworkers work with them to find housing. And so it's really a missing need in our community that our hospitals have been asking for. The city and the county have both called on the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative to come up with a solution because this is a regional problem. This is not a city of Bakersfield problem, and we really want there to be a regional solution to this issue. And finally, one possible new amenity could be the expansion in pet capacity from 15 to 50 pets. I cannot stress enough how important this is. We turn away dozens of folks because of pet capacity, and Lieutenant Burdick would be very happy by this. So, and I should, actually, I'm going to go back here. So the other thing that additional capacity at the Brundage Lane Navigation Center would allow us to do is be prepared for the work that we will be unrolling on the river soon. So the council has authorized for the city to have outreach and rapid-response teams on the river. The staff, we have currently, we issued an RFP for an outreach organization. The code enforcement and Phil's team are currently in the process of procuring vehicles for the river, all-terrain vehicles. And so, once we start going into the river, we really need a place for those folks so that they're not just displaced and moving around the city. We need a place for those folks to go into a shelter, and so additional capacity would also help us with the riverbed and addressing those encampments. And so what possible next steps are? Again, today, staff are coming to you with a recommendation to begin further research on possible additional amenities at the Brundage Lane Navigation Center. Unrelated, but just wanted to bring it up. In November 2021, next month, staff will be coming forward with additional family reunification outreach services that we're providing. We really want to beef up what other cities are already doing, which is, you know, if an individual is not from Bakersfield, wants to return home, we have our caseworkers reach out to their family, reach out to their safety net, confirm that it's a place where they can be stabilized and cared for, and do that warm handoff. In December, if the council today moves forward with the design process, we would come back with a construction cost estimate based on the findings of the contractor. And so with that, I will open it up to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Valdez. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, gentlemen, so much for making that thorough presentation and all the great work that you do. I do have a couple of questions that I would like to clarify for the benefit of the public. Today, if approved, this measure would not expand BLNC by 150 beds tomorrow or in the next month. What this does is give approval for the design process to look into that thing, the expansion of beds, among other things. Is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember. So we want to have the council be able to make an educated decision on whether to move forward, and enable to, to be able to do that, we want to be able to design and get a firm, a firm understanding of what the cost would be. So this vote, no, it is not an authorization to move forward with the expansion.
Excellent, thank you. My next question is, and I realize we don't have a representative, maybe from the county, but I, you know, want to recognize that, you know, something that Anthony brought up is that this is a regional issue. And I think it's critical that we continue to move in lockstep with our partners through the Homeless Collaborative there at the county level and with service providers, because what we don't want is the city to be the one who is buttressing homelessness for the entire region. That could create an even bigger issue here in the city. And so I don't know if staff has any input on what the county is doing. I know they did consider some measures last week, but would love to hear specifically what they're doing on bed capacity within their domain.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll answer part of this, and I'll defer to Anthony to add any other additional thoughts. What I would reflect is that the recent action by the county is a meaningful and significant signal of their commitment around homelessness. They've got significant funds invested in the mental health aspect. They are looking to ramp up their offerings at M Street Navigation Center for individuals that may want to camp or park there, as well as the additional bed spaces there. And so M Street has not been operating at full capacity during the pandemic, and the county is now signaling that they're going to move to full capacity there. And we do meet regularly with partners with behavioral health, just in operational mode. The county is also adding rapid-response teams, and so we're interested, once those teams get on board, of having conversation with the county about, you know, making sure there's coordination in how we cover some of those areas that are a little fuzzy, particularly around the river area. And then, lastly, I would just reflect that our partners, Flood Ministries, as they're doing outreach and trying to place individuals at BLNC, if there's a waitlist or another reason that they're a turnaway, we're then, you know, really working hard to make sure they're placed at any one of the other shelters in town. And in fact, sometimes, based on just the fit, because there's, you know, different characteristics of each of those shelters that meet some of the different needs of those subpopulations, we've authorized Flood Ministries to make direct referrals to those shelters on our behalf. I mean, it's our contract, but we're asking them to help work with our partners to make placements at those shelters, and it is a collective effort, absolutely. And I think your point is well made. We have to continue to push on our partners to make sure they're filling up all of their bed spaces, and not, the city's not... bed spaces, um, and, uh, not, the city's not the only one kind of taking those innovative steps to do more.
Yeah, I, is, on point, and the only thing I would add to that is, just what the purpose of an emergency shelter, which the Burnage Lane Navigation Center is, right? You have a continuum, continuum of care, uh, for homeless individuals, starting with, uh, street outreach, which Flood Ministries does for the city, um, and the county, which is helpful because they're able to differentiate and, and plug folks with the different resources. But, you know, you start with street outreach, um, you, you convince the individual to accept care and to come into an emergency shelter, in our case, the Burnage Lane Navigation Center. Um, and at the Burnage Lane Navigation Center onsite, we are connecting folks with the resources and plugging them in, uh, to the county services, uh, that exist for mental health, substance abuse, uh, Kern Medical, um, so instead of these folks having to go to the emergency room, uh, they have primary care there onsite, uh, the Kern Department of Human Services, um, and so, and, so then, you, you move folks on into affordable housing, which, uh, is managed by the Housing Authority of Kern. So, what the Burnage Lane Navigation Center is, is really kind of a triage for homeless individuals and plugging them into the county services, um, that are funded by the state and other resources for the, for the county to provide those services. Um, so, so it, it's, it's one piece in the puzzle.
Excellent, thank you both. Um, the other thing that I'll add is that, you know, and I'm sure a lot of my former business owners and current business owning, uh, colleagues on the council can, you know, uh, attribute that or agree that scaling can be tricky for any organization, for any business, and, uh, one of the things that, among the many things that, you know, Mercy House has done well, um, like you said, there have not been truly significant impacts to public safety in that area, um, and I'll be the first to admit that I, again, I have not received a single call or a text message about any issue as it relates to public safety caused by, uh, either directly or indirectly, uh, because of the Burnage Lane Navigation Center. And so, I tip my hat off to you and your team, Theo, uh, excellent work. One of the things, let me, let me take a step back, though, is that we need to take a look at the context as well. Uh, since this tract 22, um, is a very challenged neighborhood, um, there are many needs in that area. Um, it is a largely farmworking community, it is largely Spanish-speaking, um, and there are a lot of opportunities when it comes to providing job opportunities, um, increasing lighting and safety in the area, um, creating, you know, safer pathways for children, um, to get to school, um, and that is certainly a priority of mine. And so, today, I look at my colleagues and ask, you know, as we continue, and I know I've already had some preliminary conversations with many of you, that as we continue to do that work, as we continue to develop those plans and initiatives, um, that, you know, I also have your support in trying to correct some of that damage, um, from the long-term, you know, policies of the city and even before the city, uh, when the county owned this, owned this area. So, um, the last thing I'll say is that, um, I want us to continue to focus on housing placements, uh, that's where the rubber meets the road, and we want to make sure that we're getting folks out of, you know, this congregate shelter space into a safe place where they can continue to grow in many other ways and continue their path towards stable housing. And so, that's the other thing with scale, so I want to make sure that we are doing that and we're being just as efficient as we are, and if there are opportunities for us to become more efficient, let's get after it. So, with that, I want to make a motion today that I accept staff's recommendation with the caveat that, um, after the one fifty, which we're currently at, every additional fifty beds that we add, um, and Theo, you might already do this, uh, but come back to council with the presentation to specifically talk about public safety and housing placements. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I first want to say, uh, just a huge thank you to all of the individuals standing in front of us, um, Jim Wheeler, Theo Dues, Jeff Burdick, Phil Burns, Paul Sladania, thank you so much for all the work you do day in and day out and the work that your teams do. I've had an opportunity to go on ride-alongs with, rides along with, uh, Jim and Flood, with, uh, the Impact Team, with, uh, the Code Enforcement Rapid Response Team, visited many times with, uh, Theo and his team, and the work that they do day in and day out is tremendous. I mean, the fact that they're out there fighting the good fight, helping people who are most desperate in our community is just, um, just incredible. I know, you know, as we look at things, passing by different neighborhoods or, you know, observing things from, from our vehicles, we may get frustrated, but the reality is that there's a lot of good work happening every single day. And so, please, um, on behalf of our council, please send to, send a message to all of your, uh, teams and thank them for us. Anthony, I want to thank you for your presentation. I think, uh, what, what really encourages me as a policymaker is the fact that, um, the level of analysis, uh, that the city is providing now is just, is really remarkable. You know, the fact that we're able to drill down and talk about subpopulations of people rather than generalize about homelessness, um, we're really drilling down and looking at what are the, what are those specific groups of individuals that we really need to address, and how are we going to, uh, develop strategies that are unique to address those specific needs? That's the work that we need to be doing, and that's the, those are the conversations I, I'm really excited that we're having with all of our other partners, and I know we're, we're partnering, uh, with lots of different folks, and I appreciate that. Um, I do have a couple of questions, uh, related to, um, the shelter specifically, uh, but I will, before I get into that, I just want to also comment that, um, the, the response that I received from the neighborhood partners who were practically, you know, well, how should I say this nicely, uh, they, they were adamantly opposed to us purchasing the property, um, a year and a half ago. Uh, they've come back and said, "This is a great asset for the neighborhood." And in fact, not only have things, I think you mentioned, Anthony, that things have remained consistent, in, in some of their estimates, things have actually improved in the neighborhood, and I think that's, that's worth lifting up. Um, you know, the folks at Sierra Recycling said that things, uh, are, are better. Um, the fact that the pastor at Valley Bible is actually on the advisory board for Burnage Lane Navigation Center is remarkable. Uh, so, we're building good partnerships within the neighborhood as well, and I think that's an important piece. Let me ask you a question about the performance related to housing placement, because obviously, this isn't a end stop for the shelter, right? We want to move people into permanent housing, and, you know, as I visit with, uh, Mercy House and the folks, uh, with Mercy House, you know, their, their mantra is, "What is your housing plan?" To every single person who enters that shelter, the question is, "What is your housing plan?" We know that we've housed eighty-five individuals, but, but we don't know the context, so can you give us, uh, a, a clear understanding of what that means? Is eighty-five individuals, is that a good number? Is that a, are we underperforming or overperforming? And how do we, you know, what's our baseline? What's our expectation? And, uh, talk to us a little bit about that.
Yeah, so, I would say, uh, I'm gonna answer the, the first part of the question, and then I'm actually gonna toss it to, to, to Theo to answer the second part. The first part, in terms of, um, what, what I, what I heard there was, you know, how do we, how do we measure whether it was successful or not? How are we tracking, um, folks that are placed into housing? Um, so, uh, when we're placing folks in housing, what we're doing is we're matching them with a voucher, um, that's provided by the Housing Authority, um, and then our folks, um, work to find them housing. Um, and there are a couple organizations in town, um, that provide the casework, um, with those vouchers and continue, um, to follow those individuals, um, and the largest, uh, organization in town that, uh, does the casework for the vouchers is the Bakersfield Homeless Center. Um, and we, uh, had the privilege of meeting with the new director, um, I think it was last week, um, who touted, um, a really high, um, uh, housing, uh, retention rate, um, amongst, uh, their folks that, that they've tracked. Um, so, we continue to engage, um, our partners, uh, of the Housing Authority, um, who we do that warm handoff to, um, in terms of the casework, um, and, uh, I'll let Theo kind of talk to, uh, the other, how, how we measure, um, housing success versus others.
Your greetings, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Councilman. I, um, I, I think it's important to remember that the number of housing placements, we have eighty-five in our first year, I find that extraordinary. It exceeded my expectations. I don't know what your expectations were, but it exceeded mine. In fact, I would find it extraordinary in a typical year. The last year has been quite atypical, I think we could agree. The fact that we placed eight, placed eighty-five people during, uh, a COVID crisis, I think even magnifies how extraordinary that number is. However, I think what's important to remember is, the number of permanent housing placements is really much more a reflection of the whole system of housing in a community. We, as stated, we, we have forty people currently with housing vouchers looking for a place. So, in order, I think the number is extraordinary now. In order for it to become even stronger, it's not the work that's gonna happen in my shelter, it's the work that's gonna happen in the community to build and develop more permanent supportive housing. I think that's, that's the key to increasing the numbers.
I appreciate that. So, we know that, you know, in order to place a person from the shelter into permanent housing, it requires a lot of work, right? Connecting people to Social Security Administration, connecting them with, um, the right, um, you know, services that are appropriate to them. I'm looking for an industry standard here. You can help me understand, among, you know, homeless shelters, navigation centers throughout the country, what is an expectation that we can all reasonably have?
I think it's unique to every community, Councilman. I, I, I hate to be so vague in my response, I really do, but I think it, it's unique to each community. I, I have, I have been in this profession most of my working life. I've not seen, in any program I've managed before, the level of success we have here.
Okay.
If that gives you any insight, I...
That's helpful, thank you. Uh, Christian, did you want to?
Yeah, if I, if I may just offer a couple of other, uh, data points, but I won't, unfortunately, answer your precise question either. I, I think, uh, if you think about the unsheltered population, which we saw on the screen, it's about eight hundred, to have eighty placements, you're talking about ten percent of those that are unsheltered placed into permanent housing. That is remarkable. I, I think you would see, um, you know, two percent or less in many other, uh, locations that are dealing with large homeless populations. I think what's, to Theo's point, what's unique here is that, um, we're still a bit ahead of the, the larger scale issues that you might see in a Los Angeles or a San Francisco. Our numbers aren't at that scope and scale yet. And I also think, uh, just to, to be transparent about expectations, I think because Mercy House is coming in with a proven model that hasn't necessarily been, uh, other, other providers have been doing a good job, but they are approaching this slightly differently. So, I think we've had some, some really good initial success because we're, um, following a, a little bit of a different model than has been in place traditionally. So, I think the numbers are really high. I think in other places, you don't see that percentage of the homeless population being housed in a one-year period. And then, uh, to, to just put a, a couple of numbers to the point that Anthony made earlier, when they look at the, the, um, housing placements and, and the permanency there, they look at one year and two years, and so, we're, we're seeing more than ninety percent of clients after two years of being housed, still in housing, which is really important because folks are just cycling through and getting back on the streets, then, you know, we're, you know, what progress we're making, but that's a, that's a really good retention rate.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, just to, just to, um, also give you a little perspective, so, uh, we have over four hundred people right now who are, um, homeless, who are, have a voucher in hand that can't find, uh, housing. So, it's not, I, I think eighty-five is amazing, they're doing a great job, but I want you to also just think about the impact that the Burnage Lane Navigation Center has had on the community. I can give you, uh, an example, there's a lady who lived downtown on the street, just down the street from Guaranty Shoe Center. She's been on the street for a number of years. Between our efforts between BPD and Flood, we were able to get her to go to the Burnage Lane Navigation Center after a long time, and, and they worked with her and they were able to get her in a stable housing situation. And so, that's a meaningful outcome, even though it may not be a, a large number, we're making a difference. That person had been on the street for five to ten years, and now businesses in the downtown area have, and, and when I've been at meetings, they come to me and they say, "What, what, what happened to this individual? Are they all right? Uh, is she, is she okay?" And I say, "Yeah, we took care of her. The system took care of her, and, uh, the Burnage Lane Navigation Center paid, uh, played a big role in that, so..."
And the Rome team deserves credit for that as well, with Behavioral Health.
Behavioral, yes.
And, and I've actually had a chance to visit that particular individual in her new housing placement, and she had a full conversation, so that was an, an incredible, um, success story.
There's another individual like that also, so, but, I mean, there, that, you know, how do you measure the impact of one person, but that one person impacted the, the neighborhood in a great way, so...
I understand, I, I appreciate that, thank you so much. So, let me, let me just ask a couple more questions, and then I'll get off the mic here. If we added a hundred and fifty additional beds, how confident are we that we will fill them? I think I know the answer, but I want to hear from the experts who are on the, on the street every single day, Lieutenant, um, Mr. Burns.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, um, just today, I placed a person, and that was the last bed available, so, um, we will continue to have problems where we are gonna be unable to place individuals, uh, we will have to just ask them to move along, um, and we, it's not a solution, so, uh, the beds are definitely necessary, and as housing, um, affordable housing catches up, I think we'll find that, uh, this, this problem will become, uh, much less significant and much less of a burden on this community.
Councilmember Gonzalez, I think there's no question that we'll be able to, uh, fill the, the additional hundred and fifty beds, just looking at the river and the number of people on that alone, uh, we've been hitting it in just certain areas, but not in totality. So, once you look at, there's probably a hundred and fifty people on the river alone, um, so I, I think, you know, it's probably imperative that we, uh, increase its capacity.
Thank you so much. And then, finally, uh, you know, when we, um, approved the purchase of this property, we also discussed, uh, a good neighbor policy, and that included some improvements the city would make, uh, to the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, Mr. Clug, can you give us an update on those improvements? We made that promise, I want to make sure that we keep it.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. Um, I, I'll actually ask Stu Patterson if he can speak, uh, to this item a bit. What I would reflect real quickly is that we actually made that commitment by the M Street Navigation Center, as well as our Burnage Lane Navigation Center. Interesting circumstances led that we've actually made more progress by M Street than we have at Burnage Lane Navigation Center. Part of that was, uh, due to, um, some of their expansions, and they had a lot of walk-in traffic, uh, and we made some upgrades, uh, to, to help make that a more accessible site. We've put up, um, street lights there, um, we, with the, some of the supply change, chain challenges, we haven't finished all of the work around Burnage Lane Navigation Center, but it's planned or, or been in progress, but I'll let Stu add any details to that.
Councilmember Gonzalez to the mayor, yeah, that, that's exactly what I was gonna explain. We have purchased some of the materials for the street lighting, which is the first phase that needs to happen along, uh, Runage and MLK. The one item, the main item, are the poles, uh, for the streetlights that, um, is, is made of steel, and as you may have heard, there's been significant, um, delivery and purchasing and ordering delays in the supply chain for that type of thing. We, we have located wiring, pull boxes, splice boxes, um, other needs, um, for that project, we're just waiting for the poles. We, we anticipate, maybe, um, four to eight weeks, we should have that and be able to start as soon as we do. And, and then sidewalk, as you may be aware, we'll follow that, that, we have to have the underground conduit and wire in place first because the sidewalk will be right on top of that.
Understood, thank you so much, I appreciate you staying on top of that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Friedman.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Anthony and your whole team for a job well done. Um, I think this has exceeded all of our expectations. We had a vision of this incredibly high-quality center that was just a vision a year and a half ago when it was presented, and, um, we have, uh, you've realized that vision and exceeded it. I'm, I'm, I'm just impressed... I'm, I'm just impressed with the scope of services, the professionalism, the demand. If we're really turning away 60-plus people, is it a week? That tells you there's huge demand, and we need to serve more people. We made a 12 million investment, and, and we can serve more. But, I, I think I can be supportive of Councilman Arias's motion, but with one word to change that I hope he'll accept. Instead of the word, the number 50, that we substitute the word "phase," because your expertise will tell us what the next phase should be. And it, with a little detail, because you have different populations. You know, for the women's area, we need another 20 beds. I have no idea. You know what the needs are and what you can actually absorb effectively. For the family area, we need 30 beds, because there's 10 families with three children, you know. And for the men's section, we need 20 beds. The number might be 40, it might be 80, it's really three different, maybe there's four, categories that you're building to. And only you, you're close to this. I want to trust you, that you will tell us, this is what we need in the next phase, and then do the budget for the TI for the various areas you need, so that, it might be a tiny phase. But I think you need to assess the situation of, what are these, and, you know, what can you really realistically absorb and run an effective center? So, you may say, "We just couldn't do 100, because we can't absorb them like that." But bring us back your best guess, or your best advice to the council on, the next phase ought to be, and maybe it's 51, I don't know, but, you know, and broken up into these categories. And you might even say, you know, "This area, we're going to improve the TI for, for 40 beds, we're only going to put 15 now, because the economies of doing the TI are better if we, you know, common sense construction." But I think you have the expertise to do that and bring us a good plan of the next phase, and just let, the council can then approve it, phase by phase. But I just, if we just change that one word, from 50, predetermining, I don't want to put you in a box, just to the word "phase," then I would be supportive of the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Councilmember. I am open to that, and I would ask that the partners come back to us and help us define what "fair" is at, at the next meeting.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to congratulate the teams, and, and the work that we're doing, it's obvious in the community that we're making progress. It's not where we want to be, but, but we are moving in the right direction, and we can see that in a lot of different ways. And I would just give my support to the expansion. I, I agree, we, affordable housing is the long-term answer, and, and we're moving there, and hopefully we will get there, but in the meantime, people need beds, and so, we can get them there. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you to all of you. There has been a lot of progress made, we have much reason to celebrate. Theo and Anthony, you both talked about the challenges of people self-exiting, cycling in and out, and we know that mental health and substance use is a huge issue. It is the issue that prevents greater success. We've achieved a lot of success already, but we still have a long ways to go because of the challenges of mental health and substance use treatment. I'm really grateful for the partnership of the county as we've been working together. I know, Anthony, you and I have had conversations, that we've never had this degree of collaboration. Colleagues, I would encourage you to go out on a ride with the Rome team, and those are people who go out daily from Kern County Behavioral Health, to be able to see the scope of the issue that we're facing. Just as, just a few years ago, we were only a pass-through for federal dollars as the city of Bakersfield, we've taken on this challenge, and we've done so much more in expanding housing. I would challenge us, even though it's outside the scope of what we do, to keep mental health and substance use treatment in partnering with others as a very key goal into achieving sustainable change in this area. I try to make it a point to go out and talk with homeless persons every day, and there are many who, even though we will add beds, will refuse to go because they have these severe needs. And so, the more we can continue to partner with doctors, with the county, and with others in raising the, this issue, we're going to have greater long-term success. Community, I want to challenge you, we are our brother's keeper, and this is more, this problem is much larger than the city of Bakersfield can solve. You've heard the need for affordable housing, and we need a call upon you to provide that affordable housing. So, as a community, let us continue to work on California's paramount issue, the city of Bakersfield's paramount issue, in solving this big challenge. But we need all of you, and thanks to the many, many partners out there who are working together to solve this. We have a road ahead, we've accomplished a lot, but let's continue focusing on some of these areas that continue to be challenging. But thank you so much. And we now have a motion. Please cast your votes. Thank you. And Anthony, I want to give you a personal thank you. Anthony spends time with me, with the big city mayors, after each of these meetings. It's usually 8:00 or 8:30, going until 9:30 at night. And Anthony, you've been such a wonderful support in our advocacy with the big city mayors to bring down the funding that we've been able to bring down. Thank you so much. We've highlighted the issues of mental health and substance use treatment, and you've, you've been behind all of this. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you to all of you for the presentation. And now, next, please.
Council and mayor statements.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, I had an opportunity today to speak with the folks at the Assistance League, who are property owners in downtown Bakersfield. Since 1956, this group has dressed over 151,000 children before they entered school. And so, they're doing a tremendous job with their thrift store, with their efforts to provide clothing to those children who are in need in our community. But one of the biggest takeaways today was that they had a huge compliment they paid to the city for the rapid response as it relates to graffiti removal. And so, I just wanted to ensure that we pass that along to our teams. They're very excited about that. I have nothing but great things to say about the graffiti removal team, how rapidly they respond to requests. I think that's a gold standard that we should carry out throughout, throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Freeman.
This week, city manager informed us that the police needed some expanded office space, and they found a place down closer to the, the training center, and had moved quickly, and it was about 3,000 square feet, as I remember. And I had said, "Well, was there any chance we could have brought that downtown?" And he explained why, maybe this time it didn't work, it happened to happen real fast, a short-term lease. And it brought up a broader subject, that being one of our council goals every single year, is to redevelop downtown. And to redevelop, we have to bring people into downtown, people who work downtown, period. They will then start living downtown, they'll start buying food downtown, they'll start buying goods, and the only way we'll re, we'll revive downtown is when we have people working downtown, like, you know, they used to. So, and city manager informed me, they had done a lot of research where buildings available, and so, I would like to refer this to the Planning and Development Committee, where we get a little chance for some council input, and really some sharing of our ideas, and hearing what's going on, but council kind of gets involved in this, since it's a goal that kind of put the team together here, that we're all thinking about it, and that staff could come back with an initial sort, "Here's our strategy. Here's the research we've done, here's what we think. There's a kind of, you know, next time, maybe we should buy a building. Maybe we identify a block we want to work on." I mean, this is wide, wide open. Say, "We want to keep it close to City Hall, okay? Maybe within walking distance. Go down Chester Avenue." But I want to think of all, I want to think it through with the alternatives, and then the data of what might be available and problem, whatever. But, but, but I want, I think if we have some, a little more broader thinking and, and sharing of ideas, that we may think of something you hadn't, and you may think of something, we may know some investor in the community who wants to buy a whole block. It just, let's get the, the ideas popping a little bit, and maybe something will come out of this that will help us, because this is not an easy thing, and if we have any opportunity at all, where we're going to expand our city staff anyway, let's, I want to be sure we've got a plan in place, if at all possible, that we put them downtown and we bring more people here. So, I'd like to just make a referral to my committee, I'm happy to accept my own referral here, and we could, we could work on this. Okay?
Thank you, Councilmember. If I may, just really quickly, staff has had a, a desire and a goal to do a space needs assessment for city staff. I think we can wrap that and some downtown revitalization planning that we've been doing into that same report back to the Planning and Development Committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to shed light on a developing challenge here in our community. It's come to my attention that the north of the River District has provided transportation for about 900 seniors and disabled folks evidently north of the River for the past many years, and that program has become too costly for north of the River to continue to operate. And so, many folks in that community have reached out and have asked that, you know, other agencies get involved. You know, Golden Empire Transit had a meeting last night, and to my knowledge, there were some positive discussions about potentially taking on that program. But I just want to shed light again on an opportunity for frankly, many, not only Ward One residents, but also residents in Councilmember Gonzalez's district, Councilmember Parlier's district, and to a certain extent, also Councilwoman Patty Gray's district, that we are not north of the River. And so, as Golden Empire Transit considers adopting this program and implementing it, I would ask that we discuss and direct our representatives on the get board to strongly consider expanding those services to the many disabled and senior residents south of, south of the River. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Last weekend was a big deal at Jonah Community Garden, ran by the Greenfield Walking Group. They installed lighting to really help with that park, so they can do some work out there at night. There was multiple people involved at the community to help support those efforts, along with a cleanup for the community garden. The Light of the World Church, that's hubbed in Ward 7, too, provided about 50 members to help clean up the park, along with areas along South H, Pacheco, White Lane. But I want to give a special shout-out to city staff, too. Development Services, more specifically Phil Burns. Phil was just a big help in, in getting the permitting for the lighting done, and communicating with the neighbors over there, made sure nobody had a problem, and it was just a great interaction. And also, in the past, Public Works has just provided things from, are they oil bindings, steward, or, the oil bindings, or what are they called? Is that what they're called? The grinds?
Oh, oh, just pavement grindings?
Yeah, the pavement grinding. So, you provided those for the park before, to, and that's really helped the garden out a lot, too, for their pathways. So, all in all, a great project. I want to thank city staff again, and I want to thank PG&E for being a sponsorship for the lights. Have a good night. Bye.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, tonight, in part of our agenda, we approved a performance retention bonus for the PD. And hopefully, that will work and help us retain senior officers with much experience and knowledge about police work. And they'll be able to help guide and instruct a very young workforce that we have in the Police Department. So, I, I hope that program really pays off, and I'm excited for it. But other than the Police Department, we have a whole organization here, and there are many, many talented people here that have been here for quite a while, that have a wealth of experience and knowledge, and really, we need them to stay around to help teach and train and bring up their replacements sometime in the future. And I don't think we really have a plan for that, for the entire organization. So, I am asking staff to evaluate and investigate, developing a performance retention bonus system for those not covered by the PD performance system. And there's not really, I don't know, there's not really a big hurry on this, but I would have you know that come December, it is my 15th year on the council, so, I'm just saying.
Duly noted, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Saturday was Make a Difference Day, and Councilmember Parlier, you talked about the Jonah Street Group. In addition to that group, there were hundreds of volunteers out, making a difference in our community. We had well over 100 people from the Latter Day Saints Church, working in downtown. I know Councilmember Arias, Councilmember Gonzalez had a group working at the David Nelson Pocket Park. There were people at Yocats Park, Beach Park, the bike trail, and Seeds of Inspiration Garden. Painting, cleaning, trash and debris, planting flowers, removing illegal signs. So, to all of you who came out, thank you so much for making a difference. And I don't see any other requests to speak, so we are adjourned at 7:06.